Okay. We are going to be called to order. City Council Regular Meeting, it is 6:00 PM Tuesday, August the 15th, 2023. We are at Granbury City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granbury, Texas, 76048. We are now called to order, and we will now have our invocation, and Father Smith, if you will lead the invocation, certainly will be appreciated. Now, before I say this, Pastor Stephen Dillard is not in the audience, right? Oh, good. All right. Thank you, sir.
Let us pray. Father, we give you thanks and praise for all the good and perfect gifts that you've given us. You've given us life, and families, and communities, and we are especially delighted to be Texans and to be members of this county and this city. We're covered over in blessings and mercy, and we thank you for that, Father. And we pray that you would bless this city council with wisdom and forbearance. They might set examples of behavior, and that their judgments will be unclouded by anything other than that which is good for the people of this area. We're thankful for them. We ask you to bless them for the sacrifices they make and what they have to put up with from the likes of us. So, may this meeting be to your honor and glory and do good things for this city. We pray that, in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Father Smith. Now, if you'll join us with the pledge of allegiance to the United States flag and the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Move to item four, proclamation and presentation. City Council, city manager are to issue encouraging statements and recognize city staff. Mr. Kaufman?
I sound like a broken record from two weeks ago. We're still experiencing an internet, or not internet, but a cyber attack, and we are in full-scale remediation, and I've got great staff working on that with consultants, and more so, we've got folks working here at City Hall and other facilities across the city to provide and deliver the service without technology, and it is hard, because everything that we have is wrapped up in technology, and they're doing a great job keeping us going and keeping the doors open. So, thank y'all. The billing department has been extremely overloaded. We've been able to send some help their ways from other departments, and they've really struggled with the volume of customer service, even though it's not that much. Without the technology, it carries a big load, because in most cases, they're having to ask them for their account number, the customer, and if they don't have their bill, they're really in trouble trying to figure out how to get documented of how they paid their bills. So, anyway, still struggle, we're making headway on that, and just wanted to give some shout-out for all the staff for working hard to keep us going. But, it's not just, it's every department in the city. Let's just leave it at that. We won't pick out any department in particular, but every city department is struggling because of technology, lack of access to technology. Thank you all.
Thank you, council. Comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Vale?
Yeah, I just want to take a second and recognize, you know, our city manager, Chris Kaufman, and his staff, and really the entire team, certainly working through this IT situation. I think as everyone knows here in the audience, that we under a stage-two drought water conservation for the city, which obviously brings some challenges, trying to get, ensuring that the public is adhering to that. So, we're just navigating through a lot of things. I just want to thank Chris, the staff, the team, and really all 228 employees of the city of Granbury for all their hard work during some of these trying times. So, thank you.
Yeah, I, we can't say enough. Anything? Okay. Literally, the team effort that's occurred over the last two and a half, three weeks, and seems like three months, I'm sure, has been nothing short of outstanding, and that's the folks here that we call city staff. They're outstanding. Thank you. Thank you so much. Talking about, Mr. Vale brought up our economic development. So, we have a massive economic development program on the agenda tonight. We want to be sure that we give it the appropriate time. We also have a request to consider, on behalf of Hood County, to appeal the decision of the Granbury Historic Commission related to a certificate of appropriateness in place two, and place two bronze sculpture statues on the Hood County Courthouse grounds. This is listed as item 7.2, and prior to that, we have public comments, but based on the information that has actually come out literally in the last 36 hours, and this is about 36 hours old, I'm going to choose to go ahead and jump to 7.2, cover off all that we know, so that all of you who have signed up to speak out there know what we know at this point in time, and then you two will have ample time to speak on this subject. So, Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, I'd like to turn it over to our city attorney, Jeremy Sorrell.
Do you want to load on it?
No. We're good.
Do you want to amend the rules of procedures?
I'd like to amend the rules of procedures to move 7.2 to ahead of item number five, so that we can then proceed directly into five. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Burwell?
Second.
Mr. Wiley, seconds. All in favor, say aye. Okay. I think it's still going to be back to you, sir.
Of course it is. All right. Thanks, Mayor. While I'm not going to delve into specifics about statutes and what they are and what they aren't, that's not really what the issue is here. The issue that is before us is the enforcement of municipal statutes on county property, or ordinances in this case, and I spent about 30 hours this weekend working on this, trying to find things, even coming across case law that says, there's nothing been litigated on this, so there is no case law, right? So, looking through various treatises and cases, and reading through attorney general's opinions, I came across a few things, and although I've had many conversations with different folks from the county, as well as the State Historical Commission, TML, Antac, they all seem to agree with my position on this and where this stands, so I think it's pretty straightforward. There seems to be a contention about whether or not municipal ordinances are applicable on or as to county properties. And what we do know is that, yes, to some extent, county property must comply with municipal codes, but it is a very fact-specific situation. Different entities are given different types of police powers, and for example, the fire code. The county doesn't have a fire code. So, if the city were going to enforce a police power in the fire code, say at the courthouse or the annex or something, then that would be applicable, and there's case law on that that says, yes, absolutely, you can apply your fire code, because the county has not been designated to have that police power. Right? So, generally, a city would not be able to enforce any sort of municipal law that unreasonably interferes with counties' activities, right? And I actually found that in Chapter 35 of the Texas Practice County and Special District Loss Code, I thought I'd never read in my life, but there it is, right? And then as well, I found a couple of cases. One is the City of Gallatin versus Cherokee County, and the City of Galveston versus Galveston County, and those courts issued opinions that basically said what I've already said. A city ordinance cannot interfere with a county's exercise of express statutory authority. So, what we have here is an application that was filed with the city's Historic Preservation Commission. That Historic Preservation Commission is a police power, and that's granted at various levels. There are federal, state, and local, with the county and the city, right? And so, the issue here is that that filing was made in the wrong place, because if a statutory police power has been given to the county, the city cannot usurp that according to the case law. Well, Chapter 318 of the Local Government Code actually designates that police authority in the creation of a county Historic Preservation Commission, which they have. This should go to the County Historic Preservation Commission. This is a police power that they have, that the city's police power cannot usurp. So, with that, I absolutely believe that a court in this situation would likely decide that, yes, a county normally would have to comply with city ordinances unless it interferes with the reasonable exercise of the county's statutorily authorized police power. So, this is something that needs to go through the county. This needs to go through the county's Historic Commission. I also found out through all of my research that there are not only state designations, but there was in the '70s a federal designation, so there may be some federal historic preservation that needs to be dealt with, as well as state historic preservation. But what I can tell you is, the city doesn't have the authority to act on this, because that authority was already given to the county under Chapter 318 of the Local Government Code. So, the action that was taken by the Texas, or by the city's Municipal Historic Commission is void, and there is no appeal before you. 7.2 is a moot item. There is nothing for you to consider on 7.2. This is not a city issue. We've been divested by case law and Chapter 318 of being able to make a decision on this, and it clearly lies on the county to do whatever it is that they need to do through their Historic Commission, or through the state, or the federal preservation, but my suggestion to you is that 7.2 be removed from the agenda, not heard, and the county move forward with whatever it is that they need to do regarding their issue. That's all I have, Mayor.
And I, you know, I don't want to stifle any conversation that is available out here that we might want to hear, but I also wanted to be sure that we didn't have you speak, and then Jeremy come forth with this, with the information, or council come forth with the information that we have here. So, basically, what I'm hearing is that we should actually remove 7.2, because we actually, as a city, have no authority to act on it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do I need a motion? Ms. Burwell?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to remove 7.2 from the agenda and remand it, the issue back to the county.
My second.
Mr. Rodriguez, seconds. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. All right. We will go back to the original agenda, and I have a number of people that would want to speak on 7.2, and we removed it. Yeah, but I moved it around so that people could speak.
It's not a public hearing, a mayor.
It's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing, so most of those speakers are void.
They just made a motion to withdraw it, and it was seconded in unanimously, so it's not an agenda item.
It's not an agenda item.
Okay. Okay. So, in my desire to be efficient, we took that agenda item right off of the agenda. So, those of you who have signed up to speak on 7.2, there's really nothing to speak on that one, but I would say that if there are people who want to sign up to speak on other matters, we, you know, I think I botched this up a little bit, so I think I would give you a chance to sign up, speak on other matters that you might have on your mind. On agenda items, with non-public hearing, but on agenda items.
Can the attorney make a ruling on that? Are we not allowed to speak?
You're allowed to speak on agenda items.
Yeah, on non-public agenda items. Yeah, this is not an agenda item at this point, because we can do nothing with it. Okay. Okay. I see no one signing up. Let's move along to one.
Somebody signed up to speak on 7.6, I thought.
You're right. There is a 7.6 in here. Yeah, Richard Hayes. If you'd like to speak on number 7.6.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Hayes.
My name is Richard Hayes. I live at 428 Riverbank Lane, here in the great city of Granbury. As I'm sure you all recall, I serve on the Zoning Board of Adjustment, so I've looked at the parking requests for the proposed Texas House of Pickleball a number of times. This request first came to the Zoning Board of Adjustment in the April meeting, when they requested a release, relief from the zoning ordinance would require 241 parking spots, and asked to be allowed to build the facility with 63 parking spots. That was calculated as one for each player on the pickleball courts, plus one per 100 square feet for the lobby area, which consists of a store, an office, and some open area. The Zoning Board of Adjustment did not take action that night. It became obvious that they were not going to be approved, so the applicant requested it be held for the next meeting. In May, they came back with a parking study. The parking study was interesting for a number of regards. First, it said that there's very little literature on pickleball courts, because they're relatively new, new facility, but they did find one where a study had been done, and based on that, recommended a minimum parking requirement of 48 parking spaces. But, in that parking study, based on their feedback from Zoning Board of Adjustment, they came forward and were proposing 84 parking spots. And I'd like to read to you their last sentence in their parking study, which, based on the 84 total spaces, "This parking supply would allow the site to convert the building area to many other common uses without needing parking modifications." Unfortunately for the applicant, the Zoning Board of Adjustment voted it down that night. Later, they came to city council and worked out a development agreement that specifies 80 parking spaces for the facility, and tonight, they'll come before you and ask it be reduced to the 48, which is listed as the minimum number of parking spaces for the pickleball facility in their parking study. Now, having looked at all these numbers and studied them as a member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, the number that sits as the most reasonable to me is 63 spots, because that recognizes the dual nature of the building, the pickleball courts and the central area, and I think fits best with our intention to make sure we have enough parking spots to cover both the current planned use and any reasonable uses in the future. So, I'd urge you, when you consider this item later tonight, to not go below 60 parking spots, to make sure that there's enough spaces for reasonable changes in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Okay. I've looked through these. I don't see any others. Nope. Okay. Let's move to number six, the Consent Agenda. All items on the Consent Agenda are routine, or previously discussed items will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered under the Deliberation Agenda. Council, are there any items that you would like removed? Do I hear a motion to pass the Consent Agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wiley.
I make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Motion's made.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vale. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It passes 6-0. Okay. Moving along to the Deliberation Agenda, and this is a public hearing, and we will open up the public hearing after we hear the staff review. Consider a request of Vaquero Acton, or Acton Highway Partners LP to a final plat, a 1.403 acre tract of the Joshua Minnetz survey, abstract number 352, as lots one, block one, of Vaquero Acton Place. The property is addressed as 5642 Acton Highway. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. We've been working on this a while, back and forth, and we finally got it to the finish line, it looks like. So, I'll turn it over to our Director of Community Development Planning, Kara Wowie, fill us in on the details.
Okay. Thank you. So, this one is pretty straightforward. It's a request for a final plat on a site that was preliminary-platted in December of 2021. The proposal is for the ultimate construction of a Dollar General retail store, and this slide shows the site located 5642 Acton Highway. It's outlined in yellow on the map, and the overall preliminary plat is outlined in teal. So, they're just final plating that one portion, which they can do. The zoning, again, is light commercial, outlined in yellow in their application. This is the drawing of the final plat. It just shows all the required elements that a final plat would, including the subject lot, and showing all the required easements and other type of information that a final plat holds. There were no variances, no variance of anything that was required, and no other requirements. On August 14th, 23, yesterday, the Planning Commission recommended approval of final plat with a vote of 7-0. That's unanimous, and staff is also supporting with an approval of the final plat. So, this is your voting options, and I'll answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Questions of Ms. Kara? Or Ms. Wowie? Anybody have questions? Okay. I'm going to open this public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to step forward and speak on this matter? Okay. No? I'm going to close the public hearing and ask again, are there any questions? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the request of Vaquero Acton Highway Partners LP, final plat of 1.403 acre tract of the Joshua Minnetz survey, abstract number 352, as lots one, block one, of Vaquero Acton Place. Property is addressed as 5642 Acton Highway. Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the final plat as stated.
Motion made.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Corrigan. Get my neck on a swivel here. Mr. Corrigan, seconds. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That is approved, 6-0. The next three items are, we are engaged in an economic development opportunity here, and there is some continued discussion that needs to be had in the executive session prior to us bringing this back out to the open meeting, and having other discussion and taking action, as approved. So, at this time, I'm going to declare that the Granbury City Council has convened an open session, and all members are present. The city council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section 551071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation; section 551072, deliberation regarding real property; and 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, Lakeview Landing and Vaquero Acton Highway Partners LP. So, now we will be in executive session. Thank you. I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. So, we'll continue to move along the Deliberation Agenda. We'll move to 7.3. Consider an act concerning a development agreement with the RCM Lakeview Landing LLC concerning the Lakeview Landing development, and authorize the city manager to execute said development agreement. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As we just discussed, we have this agreement before you tonight for consideration. The developer is here. If you would like to ask any questions, we can get them to come to the DIAS lectern there and answer questions. Leave it to y'all. Any questions? If not, Mr. Mayor, we recommend, staff recommends approval of the presented development agreement, and authorize the city manager to execute.
There being no questions, I'll entertain a motion to, so do we make the motion on this? Yes, we would. Make this motion to authorize city manager, oh, 7-2. Yes, okay. Right. Okay. And the motion will be to authorize the city manager to execute the development agreement with RCM Lakeview Landing LLC.
So, moved.
Ms. Burwell makes the motion. Mr. Rodriguez, seconds. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Passes 6-0. Do we move to, do we have to make a motion on these others, too? Okay. This is because they're, okay, got it. Yeah, but this, my page is wrong. Yes, okay. Consider an act on resolution number 2316, accepting a petition for the creation of a public improvement district related to the Lakeview Landing development, and calling a public hearing regarding the advisability of creating the Lakeview Landing Public Improvement District for September the 5th, 2023. So, any further conversation on this one? Mr. Kauf?
I think we've exhausted that. Again, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them, but we do recommend approving Resolution 2316.
No comments, questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vale.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2316, accepting a petition for the creation of a public improvement district. Second.
Mr. Wiley, Mr. Vale makes the motion. Mr. Wiley has seconded the motion. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. I hear none ayes. It passes 6-0. We'll move to 7.5. Consider an act on resolution number 2317, accepting a petition for the creation of a public improvement district related to the Lakeview Landing development, and calling a public hearing regarding the advisability of creating the Lakeview Landing Operation and Maintenance Public Improvement District for September the 5th, 2023.
Same thing, third verse. How's that sound?
Sounds good.
But I, yeah.
Any?
Go ahead. I'm good.
Are there questions? Anyone? No questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wiley.
I make a motion that we accept Resolution 2317 as presented.
Mr. Corrigan? Mr. Wiley makes the motion. Mr. Corrigan, seconds the motion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. I hear none ayes. It passes 6-0.
Mayor, may I have a word?
Yes, Mr. Kauf.
I would like to extend my gratitude towards Tim and Austin for working so close with us on this project to get it to this point. Big, big, this is a big moment for our community. We thank you for your investment, your determining to do in Granbury, and we're looking forward to your success, and if you'll stick around, we'll get you some documents to take home with you.
Very good. Let's move to number 7.6. Discuss and consider revising the development agreement between the City of Granbury and Corata 51 LLC relating to the number of parking spaces for Lot 4 of the pickleball facility development, and authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the existing agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. Tony Callaway is here, and he sent an email to me requesting this. I will let him make his presentation to you. I was doing my best to facilitate this as quickly as possible. You know, we work hard to try to meet the needs of our citizens, and Mr. Callaway has certainly been working on this project for quite some time, and y'all know about it. We, just like Mr. Haves said, we approved the agreement, with the development agreement for the parking, and he's come up against some issues that wanted to try to change something. So, I thought, let's put it on the agenda and let him address it before you. And, because I seriously didn't have the time to sit down with him, but we all know this project well, and I thought it would be just fine to go ahead and add it to the agenda on Wednesday instead of the normal Monday deadline. So, I guess we can turn it over to Mr. Callaway at this point. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Callaway, if you'll just introduce yourself to the audience and let us know where you live. Appreciate it.
My name is Tony Callaway. I'm the owner of the Quarter 51 Development at 301 South Morgan is where my office is located. And I greatly appreciate the city manager allowing me to come speak to you tonight. And I first apologize for having to be here, actually, because I never like to come back and try to redo something that we've agreed to before. But there's been some issues that have occurred that I need to clarify for you, and the reason I've given you the submittal is so I can kind of take you through this process, so you help, so it helps you understand why we're coming back. The initial thing on the top is, was a traffic study that was referred to previously by the Planning Commissioner that, where the study actually said that we needed 48 spaces, and he reiterated the process that we went through. But we'd gotten so much, so many comments about the kind of variance that we were requesting, that when we had the opportunity to speak to you before, we were trying to give you as many, or give as many parking spaces as possible, and so we identified the 80 spaces. What I didn't realize is how much, as we'd go through the process with the city and with the planning, and especially with the septic system, how that would impact us, and also the drainage issues that affect this site. So, obviously, the cover sheet up front is the, what we agreed to previously, which shows the 80 parking spaces, shows the detention area. But if you flip over to the second page, and I'll do this quickly, because I think it's pretty straightforward. One of the things that Joanne wanted us to do was to pick up the water that's coming off of the cemetery across the Bridge Church site, because there's a lot of water coming there, and instead of having it drain on across the Quarter 51 Development, to pick it up in a diversion channel. So, the green area along the bridge property and then the Pickleball is a diversion channel, which turned out to be a 20-foot wide drainage easement. Also, there's another drainage easement that goes across in front of the Pickleball site, which picks up the detention areas on both Lot 1 and Lot 2. And so, you can see, there's a pretty large area that we had to give to easements that we cannot put a septic system in. If you go to the third page, again, here's the highlight of the site plan. The green area around the property shows where the diversion channel is. And basically, we've lost about 11,000, 12,000 square feet or so of land area. It's included in our landscape requirements, as far as the amount of area, but we're not allowed to do anything with it, because it's a ditch. So, that impacts us in terms of how much area we actually have to do the septic system. And as you know, the closest septic line to us is about 1,500 lineal feet away from us, and so, under city codes, we're allowed to do a septic system for this property. And I personally didn't realize how much area of landscape area it would take that I can't put trees in. So, this is what kind of creates the issue. So, if you flip over to the next sheet, it's actually the landscape plan that we had prepared for the site. And the green areas, as it turns out, if the perimeter area on the top and to the right side, again, is the 20-foot wide drainage easement that is basically a ditch. The building in the middle is actually, we narrowed it so that we could add some additional parking spaces before. There's a section about 20 feet wide on the left that's landscaping. Then, there's two green areas out front that are landscaping. The problem is, as I talked to the septic design, they're saying that with all the trees that we're required to put on this site, we can, and we're putting in a drip system. A drip system is totally underground, doesn't spray. It's the best system that you can get. But I can't have trees growing down into the drip system. So, I went, no trees, you know? So, we are required, under code, to, as I noted down there, 18 canopy trees, 36 decorative trees, and 108 shrubs that are required for our landscaping. We have far more landscape area, but as you look, there's only one area, the 3,150 square feet up front, that we had, that we did not put any landscaping in. The problem with that is, I need 10,200 square feet for the septic system that doesn't have trees penetrating through it. So, either the decorative trees or the canopy trees cannot be in the landscape area. And so, the area that we did on the right-hand side, lower right, you can see how many trees we were putting in there before, but as they're telling me, that's really not enough for us. So, if you flip to the next page, this is what I'm proposing to you. And I mentioned that the 48 spaces is the amount that was asked for by our parking engineer and parking study. And I am at the point now where I need to provide the area we need for the septic system, the area for landscaping, and the parking, and how I can balance that to meet the requirements. And so, what I've asked for is, and what I'm requesting for you tonight, is that if you look at this plan, this shows taking the 23 spaces that's on the south side to the right, and the nine spaces that's to the left side, which would give us the basic 48 spaces. I actually think we may be able to get more than that, but I would request that I be allowed to work with Chris and the staff to balance the landscaping, the irrigation, not irrigation, the septic in our parking, so that the project actually works for us. The biggest issue, as I said, is that I have to have about 10,200 square feet, plus meeting the landscape requirement. So, I'm also gonna ask you, to what I put down at the bottom of that page, provide a minimum of 48 parking spaces for Lot 4. Provide a minimum of 50% of the required trees and shrubs. I did not want to request that. I'd like not to, but the more that I have to put in, the more that we have trouble in terms of allowing for the septic system. And so, basically, I've put some numbers around. Here, we have about 14,000 square feet of landscape area that I'm showing in green. Now, that's not all the landscape area. You'll see, we've got trees, islands, parking islands, other things of that nature in there, but these are the areas that I can use for the septic system and other landscaping. So, it's what I'd propose to you, with your approval, and however you would want to do that. At a minimum, we'd like to provide 48 spaces, and I'll get as many as I can. The other gentleman mentioned 60. That's a possibility, but I won't know that until I finalize our septic design and the landscaping, if you'll allow what I've requested, about 50%. Now, that still means we're gonna have nine shade trees. We're gonna have 18 decorative trees, and then 50 some odd shrubs for a two-and-a-half acre site. And I can't plant in a good portion of the site in any case. So, we're still having a pretty heavily landscaped lot. So, that's the reason that I had to come back to you. I appreciate your consideration and happy to answer questions.
Counsel, do you have questions? Mr. Callaway? No. Mr. Callaway, I have a question on the cemetery. Where's the water going from the cemetery and the Bridge Church now, or the runoff?
It just runs across the property.
The she...
If you, you look on that, there's a creek on further upper right-hand corner. We have, the Pickleball is Lot 4. The lot just adjacent to Bridge is 1, then Lot 2 is the middle, which we talked about last time. Lot 3 is on, over to the north, and then it drains to a creek, or drainage channel, on the north end of the property. So, all of that water now is draining across the site. So, obviously, what Joanne's concerned about is, once we pave, we're obviously doing detention, and we'll do detention, but usually you do detention for what you're dealing with on your site. In this case, we have so much water coming from off the site, and that's why she wanted the diversion channel. And so, that, which makes sense to me. I understand that. But obviously, it impacts us in terms of the amount of area that we have to work with.
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Callaway, are you utilizing any of the parking lot or the drive lanes for storm detention at all?
Actually, we have proposed that to her. The, I think the answer is no on Lot 4 at the current time, but the detention areas are not our problem. The detention area shown on the site for Lot 4 is actually the blue piece on top. It has a stone wall around it. It's certain depth, and it meets the requirements for that. If you look on the left-hand side of that, there's two boxes that I've highlighted in green just off of Lot 4, and those are the detention areas for lots 1 and 2. And then, Lot 3 is up across there. So, we do have detention areas on the site, so that's not our problem as much as, just we've lost so much area. And the septic system, again, to function properly over a long term, we just need to not have tree roots growing into it. And obviously, our ordinance calls for a lot of trees.
Is the long-term plan for this to be on city waste?
No.
No?
Too far away.
Not this time. Again, I mean, if septic ever gets there, that's something that the owner could consider, but to my knowledge, there's no, nothing planned specifically for it. Like I said, we're 1,500 feet away from it now.
Well, Mr. Callaway, the only thing I could think of is, you know, this project is consuming more of the lot than what you intended. That means you need to cannibalize maybe some of Lot 3 or Lot 1 to make your project bigger. Is that a possibility? Have you looked at that?
Well, yes, Chris, but the problem with that is that, in order for us to have a septic system, the state requires us to have a one-acre site.
Right.
So, if I was going to cannibalize any, they're just barely over an acre. Lots 2 and 3 are just over an acre, and Lot 1 is just a little bit bigger. But if we cannibalize that, we'd have to take quite a bit of space. I mean, we'd be taking 13,000 square feet of space in order to do that, but then I wouldn't have enough room to, and be able to do a septic system for the other sites.
Can you do a shared septic?
Not that... No, I think I asked that question the other day, and they said, under state law, you're required. In fact, I did ask that question of our sanitarium.
If you're gonna divide the property, yeah.
They said, you can't, you can't share that.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
What I'd suggest, if we could, if you're open to that, I'd love to do a modified development plan that, where I have my septic designer or landscape designer with your consideration for what I've requested on the landscape ordinance, to do a new development plan, and see if I can't get the 60 parking spaces. I'm not sure that I can, but I think that was a suggestion. And actually, my client would like to have more parking, but what I had to tell her was that we're just up against it in this situation. And obviously, losing the drainage easements are the biggest things. There are more drainage easements on this site than any that I've ever dealt with.
Mr. Mayor?
But that's because we are at the bottom of a drainage area.
Go ahead.
And Tony, I'm just kind of eyeballing this.
Okay.
If you did, the driveway's going around the edge anyway. If you extended it out enough to do parallel parking, where you're eliminating those other parking spaces, just looking at it, I think about every three spaces would be a parallel space.
Mm-hmm.
So, it looks like you could put in about 11 spaces that way.
That's a possibility.
And parallel parking would only be, it'd be less than half of the depth of a full space.
Eight feet versus 22 feet.
And so, if you did that, you gain, if you gained 11 spaces, now you're at 59, which is basically 60. And that might give you enough room for your landscaping and septic.
And Bruce, I'm happy to look at that option. I mean, that's what I do. I'm a site planner. It makes all kinds of sense. The thing that I really needed to ask you is to give me the flexibility to rework this, and then replace the development plan that we agreed to as the exhibit within the development agreement, if we've got 60 spaces, 61, 65, 57, whatever it might be. And we'll do it the most efficient way possible. I mean, the most efficient parking, obviously, is we can go 90 degrees on the perimeter. But you do make a good point here, since I need to have more landscape area on that end, that taking 10 feet, or actually, 9 feet, would be better than taking 20 feet. So, I agree with you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Mr. Callaway, obviously, this is being designed as an open ditch easement. Have you looked at putting in drainage structure and utilizing that surface that would be on top of that drainage structure for whatever?
Well, we're still not allowed to do a septic system and an easement. And even if you run a drainage pipe there, you're still gonna have to have...
I was thinking about parking on that, on that edge, where you remove the parking. I guess that's the back of the building. That's what I was looking at. Is that the side?
This is the side over here.
North. So, it'd be on the, on the east side, right here. That's a big, that's a big chunk of drainage easement, and I was like...
Well, the creek that, well, the section that we're required to put in is basically 15 feet wide. We have a slope sides and then flat bottom, and it's 15 feet. So, and that's based on the, that's really what Joanne gave us in terms of the size of the, well, agreed with our civil engineer, that that's what we needed to do.
Yeah, I know. It's gonna convey X amount of water, and you should be able to do that underground, put a parking lot on top of it. That's what I'm saying.
Well, obviously...
You can't do that.
You potentially could do that, but that doesn't, that doesn't solve two things. Number one, the cost to put this much water in about 700 feet around the perimeter of this in a large culvert pipe, I don't think would be allowable for us to do that, to be honest with you. We thought about the potential of that, but with the kind of water that we're required to put there, it was, it made more sense to do the ditch. And again, Chris, I'm happy to, you know, if I just get a positive from you, I'm happy to sit down and work with you and staff and see what we can best come up with. But obviously, we're dealing, we're dealing with just a variety of inflationary costs and so on. But that's, I'm not here just because of the funds. This is, this is just something that, as I sat down and looked at it, I didn't have many options in terms of, with a septic system design.
I think that this conversation needs to take place with the staff and work it out, and then bring it back to the council.
Okay. Our plat is due on, before council on September the 5th, so hopefully, between now and then, we could address that.
I bet we can visit with you. We may not have the technology to support what we're trying to do, but we can visit with you and work through... trying to do, but we can visit with you and work through it from your side.
Okay.
But again, it's, I think this discussion needs to take place with staff and go from there.
Happy to do so.
How do y'all feel about that, Kara? Y'all got any comments, Kara, Joanne, Rick?
That's all thumbs up.
Yep.
But I will also say that the 48 spaces, if you get back to just a basic argument about the parking, any, nothing is addressed in the code that talks about the number of parking spaces for this kind of facility. That's what we had all the discussion. That's why we did the parking study. The comment was, well, what happens if the use changes in the future? Well, that's true on any project in the city. So you can't say, you can't build this building with only these parking spaces that is what you need, because it might be a different use in the future. That was the argument that we tried to present to the zoning board of adjustments, and got no consideration whatsoever. So I think the 48 spaces, and let me just kind of give you a synopsis. The 48 spaces, we only have 32 people maximum that can be playing in here. They're here for an hour and a half, and then there's a half hour between when they complete and the new group comes in. So even if we're full, 64 people in some kind of transition is all that we're talking about. So 80 parking spaces is way beyond what we need. So that's an item that we can discuss. But on the other side, to stipulate that this building and this use has to provide more parking than what we need, because of what it might be in the future, I will say, and you ask about the sewer, at some point, if the sewer is available, and this owner or the other owner can tie into it, septic is not needed, then it's easy to add substantially more parking spaces, just based on the design. That's just something that I've told the owner, because they would like more parking spaces. Not because they need them, but just because it makes sense to have enough for whatever use they might have. So anyway, I think that's, that's something to discuss.
Mayor, I've got a question for the applicant. Is there another facility like this here so more close?
No, the only one that I'm aware of is, there's a chicken and pickle somewhere that the owners talk about, but they have restaurants as well.
Okay.
They serve food. This facility does not serve food. They don't have, they have a small professional shop where they can sell paddles and wiffle balls and things of that nature.
And the reason I ask that is because it's all based on assumptions of what people are going to do. And we don't have facts. We don't have facts that people are just going to go in there and stay and just play and leave. We don't have that. So it's, we're taking your information based on assumptions of what these people are going to do, and the number of required parking spots that are going to be required. I mean, we don't know if they're going to hold, you know, leagues. We don't know if they're going to hold tournaments. We're just, you're giving us information, but we're up here with basing a decision on assumptions. And sometimes, that's not in the best interest for us. And I just hate to say it that way, but we have to take it that way.
I understand. But what I will tell you is that the traffic study, and I didn't bring the whole study, I just brought the part with the recommendation, but the rest of the study, they did do research on other facilities. And they, he had an attachment of another facility that they looked at and so on. And this was their recommendation. And these guys are Kim Lee Horn, they're one of the best engineers in the country. Their recommendation was for the 48 spaces, based on their research. And we had him at the zoning board of adjustments presentation, and he made that presentation. And I understand the, I didn't ask the owner to come here tonight, but we did talk a lot about how this will be operated. The owners of this are three ladies that are pickleball addicts. I mean, they, that's what they love to do, and that's what they want to do. Two of them are citizens here, the other one likely be moving here. All of them are successful in their businesses. And basically, their approach is, this is a pickleball facility. It's not a country club. It's not, they don't have any area. We have like 3,000 square feet in the middle section as a receiving area, bathrooms, a small office for the operator manager, and a little shop. That's it. Everything else is the course. And so we don't have areas where you can have a lot of people. We don't have bleachers. We don't have anything of that nature. It's not for, and if they have, as I understand it, the tournaments, if they do have them, there are still basically people coming in and people leaving. It's not people just hanging around, see, they play, and then they compete, then they play another group, and you know, it's kind of a round robin competition. It's not like you're going to have 10 basketball teams watching the other teams play. That's not how it works. But I will have Kim here next time on the 5th, and she can certainly answer those kind of questions about that. And if you'd like, I'll be happy to bring our traffic engineer back, and he can answer questions for you as well. It's a tough decision, because again, we don't have anything to hang our hat on.
I think Kara would like to speak in response to my solicitation.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Callaway.
Yeah. So city engineer Joanne and I, we were kind of commiserating back there. We think that to facilitate development and move the plat forward, we probably would need to condition the plat with, we don't have ideas of what, but something that would help move the plat along, and at the same time, address some of the concerns that are expressed here. There may be some situation, there was conversation about moving lot lines possibly. That might take a little bit of strategic thinking, may result in needing to have an amended plat, I don't know at this stage. Just wanted to highlight those. As for the parking, that, you know, that's a separate consideration from the plat. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Well, let me just add to this. I cannot move lot lines. And I mean, I don't have the opportunity to move lot lines unless they buy one whole property, and they don't need that. So we've been at this for almost two years, that I've been working on this site. We've gone through a lot of different issues, and apologize for my impatience here. But the plat needs to be approved. It has nothing to do with the parking. The plat needs to be approved. Next week, it was approved yesterday at Planning Commission. And then we need to see if we can work these things out. If they can't work them out, then we'll have to find somebody else for this lot. But my clients fought, as long as they can fight, they really want to be here. I want them here. I think it's great for the city. And again, I think there's a reason to agree to a fewer number of spaces than 80. That was arbitrary, very arbitrary. 48 is not arbitrary. It's just a matter of how many can I get on the site, and we'll try to work on that in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Okay?
Other questions?
Okay.
So is there a motion to be made on this? Are we delaying?
I'd recommend just directing staff to work with Mr. Callaway to see if we can get to a yes on this, and get as many parking places as we can, logistically, working with his design engineers. And obviously, the plat's going to be on the rotation for September 5th. This issue could still linger on after the plat. This doesn't have anything to do with the plat, so.
Good. I'm prepared to start construction on the common area piece, which is up on, which is the common area of the main drive, not necessarily Lot 4, but that piece. We have the plans in for permit review. So I mean, we are a long way, but we need to get it resolved, and happy to do so. I appreciate your consideration very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So I'm hearing we do not need a motion on this, that staff has been asked to work with Mr. Callaway on getting to yes? No motion is needed? No action be taken? Okay. I believe that finishes the agenda item for tonight. Is there any other business? No, we are going to go into executive session, I hear. We're going to take a 10-minute break right after that, or right after we go into executive session. I now declare that the Granbury City Council convened in open session that all members are present. The city council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section 551071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. 551072, deliberation regarding real property. And 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, Lakeview Landing and Vicarroll Act and Highway Partners LP. We are now in executive sessions. I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes in open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. Any other actions? Comments? Convene no further business. Sign out. The meeting adjourned.